Good evening. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Ten held today on June 12, 2023. This meeting is now hereby called to order. Statement of Notice of Publication. Madam Clerk.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6, 2023, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Council President Seula?
Council President will be late to count, excuse me, he is not coming. Councilwoman Mira will be late. Let us stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. There are no proclamations on our words or presentations. However, we are going into executive session. It shouldn't be too long, but we have to go in and discuss some things before the regular meeting gets underway. So, Madam Secretary?
Resolution 2023-194, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it and is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex of the state of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the hearing after specific subject matter and that such subject matters to be so discussed as as follows: litigation, interlocal agreement/football fields. Be a further resolved that such record of the above discussion we may public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Your pleasure. Motion has been made by Ms. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Okay. We shall return. May I have a motion to go back into open? Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We were free convened into public session. There is nothing on the agenda session. We do, however, have ordinances now to, for second reading, 2023-20. Madam Clerk?
2023-20, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating $2,095,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $1,342,500 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof authorized in and by the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor requests to waive the full reading. Waive the full reading by Mr. Olivera, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. You may come forward. Please give your name and address. You can ask any questions or make any comments concerning this bond ordinance on first call, second call, third call.
Close.
Motion to close by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move.
Second.
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2023-21.
Ordinance 2023-21, bond ordinance providing for improvements to the water treatment, storage, and distribution system appropriating $950,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof authorized in and by the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor requests to waive the full reading.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Olivera, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. You may come forward. Please give your name and address, and you can speak on this matter or ask any questions concerning this on first call, second call, third call.
Close.
Motion has been made to close by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kretchinsky. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. An ordinance first reading by title only, 2023-22. Madam Clerk?
2023-22, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 155 entitled "These."
Mr. Olivera?
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2023-22 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on July the 10th by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Olivera, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We shall revisit this on July 10. Moving on to reports.
Hello, sir. Good evening.
Oh, good evening, everybody. The 2020 and 2021 roads, there's just one punchless item. We're waiting for rain. We tested it with a jet truck the other day, and still some ponding water. And try and get the contractor to fix that so we can close that out. The 2022 project, the paving work is complete, just some minor items to finish that up, and then that can be closed out. The 2023 local aid project, there's a resolution on your agenda tonight authorizing us to do the design. We'll get that done and get it out to the DOT for review, and then that can go out to bid. The 2023 local transportation projects grant, which is for portions of Alborn Street, Franklin Street, and Olsheski, that has been submitted to the DOT. The 2024 local aid program, you have a resolution on your agenda tonight, which will authorize us to make that submission to the DOT. The substation maintenance, the only thing left is the training, which is currently scheduled for Thursday morning. Once that's done, we can close out the project and put together a proposal for the next year's maintenance, which has been a couple of years now. So I'm anxious to get that moving forward. Well, number two R, we closed out. Treatment plan upgrades is substantially complete, just some minor things to be taken care of. The stormwater assistance grant, you've been awarded $25,000. The borough gets, all towns get $15,000 upfront and to get it going. The primary purpose for this, though there are other ways to use the money, is to map all your storm sewer and listen your storm sewer lines, which is a requirement of the DEP by 2025. So I will submit a proposal to you to see how far this money will go, or if we can get it all done under that. But that is the intent of it. So I will put something together regarding that for the governing body, and you can make your decision, and if so, we'll move forward with that. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions for Bruce? No? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Mr. Zenga?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Two items. The first one is we have a renewal of our banking services with Providence Bank for the next two years. We did get a pretty favorable interest rate. And the other resolution is for authorizing summer rec employees and other summer employees.
Anything for Mr. Zenga?
I have a question, Mr. Zenga. The Providence Bank renewal, will they still be giving us like the check reader for depositing? Are we?
Now, what we did, they gave us two proposals. The first proposal was an interest rate less .77 basis points if we want all the services we had prior, or an interest rate less .47 basis points if we wanted to pay for it ourselves. When I did the calculation, it would cost us around $20,000 to pay for the services, but the interest portion would be about $40,000. So we're going out to get proposals for armored car right now. We ordered all our supplies through Providence, so we're pretty good for a while, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to start paying for all the supplies going forward.
Okay.
But the interest rate portion is a lot more money than what it would cost us to pay for the services.
Okay, but we haven't gotten those proposals yet. Are we sure that it's gonna be less than those services? Like the armored vehicle and?
Yeah. We know what we used to pay for the armored vehicle, so we know what that cost. Supplies we used to pay for, so we know what that cost. The interest rate portion, you know, is about $40,000. If we take the .3 basis points to our benefit, it's around $40,000. The cost will be about $20. So we're gaining more money by keeping the interest with us instead of taking a lower interest rate.
Okay.
Okay. So, Saurus?
Yes, Mayor. Tuesday, July 4, we're gonna be closed. So that day's garbage route will now be picked up on Monday, July 3. So put your garbage out on Sunday night for Monday pickup. There'll be no yard waste pickup, and we'll be putting out a nixle, and it'll be on Facebook and on the website. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything for age? Lieutenant?
Hi, Mayor Borough Council. As you all know, on Saturday, June 3, the police department sponsored and held our last bicycle rodeo successfully. Some of you were there. This past Friday, June 9, the activity in town was due to the law enforcement torch run to support Special Olympics. So all the sirens and so forth were blocking the roads for the police officers and other supporters of this event to raise money for the torch run for Special Olympics, which is held in Trenton, New Jersey annually. This Wednesday, June 14, the police department, along with other government agencies, will be participating in Government Day. Hopefully, the rain holds out for that. Third grade from the elementary school marches downtown and gets to visit all the different buildings downtown. So we're looking forward to that. We're also in the process right now of background investigations to replace two recently retired police officers. We're in that process currently, and also we're hoping that Consent Resolution 2023-210 passed us this evening for hiring special Class 1 law enforcement officers.
Thank you. Anything from our lieutenant there? No? Okay. To our clerk, all went well with the primary?
Yep.
No problems there? Well, technology seems to be ruling the day.
No, everything worked out really well. Yeah, yeah.
Good. Very good. Let's see, we have on the legal side?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Arthur?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. As you note today, you noticed there's a lot of activity on Main Street. County is paving Hillside Avenue between Olbers Turnpike and Main Street. They're also paving Jackson Street from Main Street to Water Street. You also may have noticed that on Main Street, our subcontractor B&W was doing some work. What they are doing there is, before the county gets into their removing of the trolley tracks and paving and whatever, because once they do that, there's a penalty to open the street again, we made a decision to put in some new insertion valves. What this will do is it will narrow the amount of people that will be involved. Do we have a water main break, a valve break, or we want to do some work on the pipes? We can narrow the amount of people that would be shut off by water shutdown. So we're doing that. B&W is doing it on Main and Obert, Main and Thomas, and Main and Gordon. And just for the public and the council's edification, that is a $200,000 job. The other thing that I wanted to go through, there's a couple of resolutions. Number 203 is a contract with Forerunner Industries. What that is, is there is a new state law that is coming in that says that all sellers must disclose to buyers if they're, the piece of property was ever involved in floods or within the flood zone. And what this does is it'll allow us to do software where this will be on the website, and we won't be getting 50, 60 calls a week from realtors all going on the same house looking for the same information. We've started downloading some of the information. The information will include their zone, if we have an elevation certificate, and other things like that. Unfortunately, it's another state mandate without any assistance from the state. The second one is authorizing execution of supplemental software product agreement with Mitchell Humphrey. Mitchell Humphrey is the software that we use for the construction department. In the beginning of the year, the governor passed a rule that said we have to have the ability to take in permits and plans by computer. Right now, our software doesn't allow that. This upgrade will do that. We still haven't figured out how the subcodes are gonna be able to take a look at a set of plans on their small computer screen, but this will at least put us in compliance with that. The last two things I have is 211 and 212. I've asked Mr. Fury from Agro to come to explain what we are awarding in these two contracts. Mr. Fury?
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me back. Again, I'm Mike Fury, president, owner of Agro Environmental Lab Services. I was asked by OR to come down here to hopefully answer any questions about these two resolutions, 211 and 212. Before I do that, we, I wanted, I'm happy to report, we did have a, three people from the NJDEP came and did an inspection. After, it's been a while since they've been to onsite at the treatment plant. They did review the entire water system, and they were extremely happy with the progress that the borough has made. And they were very complimentary on all the, they were very, particularly interested in some of the treatment plan upgrades, and then, and they were pretty impressed with what we got so far. So I, I'm here to answer any questions about the, one of the resolutions is a proposal to look at hydraulic model, to take the hydraulic model and to focus in on some of the problem areas of the borough where we see most of the dirty water issues, and to try to come up with some kind of solution, a long-term solution in order to, in order to address that. The other item, 212, is a proposal to embark on a, you know, some treatment changes in the treatment, in the treatment plant, namely, one of the changes is to possibly move from the lime for pH adjustment into caustic soda. And the other proposal is to, for the addition of a polyphosphate to help with minimizing a lot of the dirty water that you see out in the system. So I'm just gonna open up to any questions anybody has. Is there any particular questions about those two resolutions and what we're trying to? We did submit a preliminary plan to the DEP to start on this project. And once we, if we, if we do, you know, if the resolution does pass, we'll immediately start the process of, you know, writing to the DEP and applying for a temporary permit and to get things started as fast as possible. So that's, that's what I'm here to answer questions about the two projects. If you have any particular questions, that I might be able to help. I'm here to answer questions.
I have a couple of questions not pertaining to your proposals. It was questions based on last meeting. Quite a few people that came up. One of the biggest questions was the letter that was put out. What was the delay? Has the letter, or I should say, has the town met the requirement with the, with the state?
You're talking about the notice for the copper violation?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that, that notice was required by law. Those are standard language by the DEP. That was, that notice was put together, posted on the website, and we're in full compliance with that particular violation.
As of today, we're good.
We're good, yeah. But part of the, part of the long-term plan is to, is to somehow address some of the chemical changes that we're proposing.
All right.
So they're, they're are connected.
So is there a way that when there's these reports come out, it could be, I guess, you could say presented to the town a little bit faster than what we experienced last, you know, with the delay?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we, the notices, noncompliance come out, the initial notice came out. That particular one, there was, we missed a deadline of December 31, and a subsequent violation was related to the initial violation. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to make a better effort to notify the borough to try to address these things before they become violations. Is that, hopefully that answers the question?
No, that's, that's good. The other question I had is, I know that there was another question that came up, although the council has a little bit of an idea. Where do we stand with a plan moving forward with the water issue?
What do we stand with, with this particular plan?
Well, any type of plan, like?
We're particularly, we, most of the work at the treatment plant has been, has been done. They recently made some repairs to the booster pumps. All three booster pumps are fully operational. The treatment plant is functioning very well. Some of the, the two major projects, the backflow preventer and the air gap system is in the process of being completed, and that hopefully will be done and it'll meet that deadline for the DEP. So we're making significant progress. I, like I said, the last time I was here, significant progress has been made on the treatment plant. Now, you know, now you, eventually you need to shift, shift your focus out into the distribution system and address some of the piping issues that you have.
Piping mains?
Yeah, the mains, main replacement, possibly cleaning and lining, all the, all the issues that, that plague the, the distribution system. We have found, when they cut out a few valves, we have seen significant amounts of tuberculosis, which is, which is the buildup of the iron, which is, you see that normally in, in water systems. This one particularly has, you know, has a significant amount of that tuberculosis. So one of the, the treatment, the proposed treatment hopefully will address that, will help, help to address that. That in combination with the hydraulic model, to look at the areas where there, where you see most of the dirty water, and to focus on efforts on what to do in that particular area. So that would be this one?
Yep.
Yeah, they did, they did the original hydraulic model. The DEP did mention hydraulic model during the inspection. They actually looked at it and ran the model, and they, one of, one of the recommendations they made was to, to continue with that hydraulic model to look at the, now that you have a good idea where, where these areas are, to focus on those areas.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Approximately, how effective is the introduction of the polychemical?
The introduction of polyphosphate, it's specifically?
Approximately.
It's, it's, what it does is it offers, it puts a thin layer coat on the insides of the pipe, and the idea is to coat the pipes and then prevent the, the release of
The turbidity.
The turbidity and the iron magnates. And if it's done correctly, it's done correctly, it's, you know, implemented correctly, and then, and then, you know, brought on slowly. If it's done the right way, it could be pretty effective.
Is that a one-time process, or is it?
It's a continuous treatment.
Continuous?
It's continuous, yeah, you'll continuously treat, treat, just similar to you continuously treat for chlorine or for lime.
Okay.
An additional chemical. Any other questions?
Who else? Okay. Just stick around for a little while.
No, I will.
Thank you. Okay. We finished with Arthur. Okay, we'll start with our governing body. Let's begin with you. All went well with the?
Yes. Sorry, everybody, I was late. The elementary school had their talent show this year. My luck was I was able to ask the teacher when my daughter was gonna perform, and she was the first performer. So I went in, I saw her, and I ran out to hear. So they do a great job this year. They had 24 performances going on tonight. So good luck to all them, and I'm sure they're very happy to be up there showing their talent. This month has been the month of trips for the schools. I know second grade went to Sandy Hook, seventh grade went to Medieval Times. They're getting their class trips out, and I know this week the sixth grade is going to Pennsylvania. So I'm happy to see that coming back to the schools and the kids experiencing field trips. And tomorrow will be a fun day for the elementary school. I don't know how well that's gonna pan out with the rain, but hopefully they'll get that done. Other than that, I don't have anything for my committees right now. Just my next Board of Ed meeting is June 22, and my library board meeting isn't until the end of the month. And I'm sure Mr. Byrne will have some stuff to say with the environmental, environmental and shade trade commission. So that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. The Office on Aging has a few road trips going to Ollie's Bargain Outlet this Wednesday, the Shop Right, and the Armchair Travel Club has a trip to France as $3 prepaid, hopefully. If you're in the program and everything, it'll be on this Thursday. The, on Friday, the 16th, the thrift shore, the thrift shop is open at the Office on Aging at, from 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Aside from that, the only other information would be that the office would be closed on the 28th for the summer mingle at the RMR. But that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
So Parks and Rec, I want to start off by congratulating our South River rec softball team. They went 10-1 this season, which is great. Our U7 baseball team just beat Edison in the championship game. They were actually so good, they removed them from the playoffs. So Edison decided to play against them in the, what would have been the championship game, and they came away with the W. Something that's very awesome that Terry and Jessica had planned is the 7U baseball is going to compete against the Little League, and they will be, it's called Battle of the Riv, and the winner will get a trophy. So they have a lot of fun and exciting stuff coming up. Parks and Rec, in terms of summer rec, please look out for flyers. Terry and Jessica decided to do some activities at the end of summer rec to kind of help alleviate some stress from the parents. So they have cheer gymnastics, youth agility, and tennis that will be taking place right after summer rec is over. And I, again, I just want to give Terry and Jessica some credit. Yesterday, they had the Spring Festival for sports. It was awesome. They had bounce houses, they had food. Parents loved it. Parents loved it so much that they asked for it at least once a month. It was just fun for kids to get away and just play for the day. So I do want to congratulate them because they've done an excellent job. And we're gearing up for summer, fall, and winter already. So we're gonna be promoting all of our activities for next year, hopefully in about two, three weeks. And our cheerleading program is getting ready to kick off. So we have 40 anxious cheerleaders getting ready to compete in a 10-month competition. Julie, do you know when their first competition is?
Oh, it won't be until January, but they start practicing.
They're practicing now. So it's, we're really excited to see how, how much they grow and how well they do. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
First, I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out to the Memorial Day Parade. It turned out to be a beautiful day and a really nice turnout. I especially like to thank the South River Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission. Teresa Hutchison, our chair, Simon Caterina, our vice chair, Alda Mello, Ed Adamsky, Stephanie Finley, Susan Olson, William Smith, Robin Smith, and Amelia Trzgiak. They really did a very nice job getting everyone organized, and the parade started, as always, on time. Due to the paving on Jackson Street, the food bank is unable to receive donations on Tuesday and Wednesday morning this week. Donations can be dropped off on Tuesday, 6:13, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, and on Saturday, 6:17, from noon to 2:00 PM. And just a reminder again, the South River Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission will be running South River Day this Saturday, June 17, from 12 to 5 on Montgomery Street. Hope everybody comes out. There are many vendors. There's a petting zoo, I understand, some rides for the kids, and it's gonna be a really nice day. So hopefully the town will enjoy another lovely day in South River. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gindy?
I have nothing to report, but I was asked by Chief Scott Wolf to give his report since he couldn't make it in today. He wanted to thank everyone that helped with the Oldbridge Fire, Oldbridge Turnpike House Fire. Everybody got out safely. Mutual aid was greatly appreciated. On June 25, the Truck Committee will be going there for their final truck inspection for the new engine before it comes down to priority one. And on July 1, they will be having their hose testing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. This is a chance for the public to come forward, ask any questions, make any comments. You'll be given 10 minutes. Please give your name and address. Mr. Byrne?
Richard Byrne, 11 Bissett Place. I got promoted from a splint to a boot. So things are going with that. But, so as for the Environmental Commission, we're going to be at South River Day. We've got some good stuff to give away to the kids. We've got tree seedlings, and hopefully it'll be a good day for everybody. So going back to last meeting, I was all worked up over that, that legal notice and ragging on the NJDEP about the language that they required to be in there that really isn't pertinent to what the problem was at the time. And I, I came to ask Mr. Lindenski, what the, you know, I looked up the regulations, and what were the numbers? How many tests were over the limit? And you, you didn't have to look it up, you had it right there. So I wanted to thank you for, you know, having that on hand to answer that question. And that was what I was looking for. And, but, and the other thing is, the violation wasn't the copper levels. The violation was the failure to file the long-term management plan by December 31. And at last meeting, oh, it's gonna be done. So was the new, long-term management plan filed?
Yes.
So? So, that's, so the violation is now complete and it's done, right? So, absolutely, thank you. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is this, the saying, only in South River and that people say this when something crazy happens. And so, I want to change that and I want to make that good things that happen in South River. So, on Tuesday, both Lisa and I were understandably consumed with the events of the day for the election. And so, we forgot to put the trash can out because our pickup is Wednesday morning. And I don't know if you, you've seen my house, it's not a semi-circular driveway, it's a semi-peraboloid, one of the benefits of a degree in mathematics. But, there's bushes all around, so you can't see where I have the garbage cans right up next to the bushes. But, your, your trash collectors didn't see our can out. He stopped the truck, they got off, went, it's no more than five feet from the curb, but he, they took it out, emptied it and put it back. And so, I just wanted to say, Mr. Saris and all of you, you have top-quality people working for you down there at Public Works. I did, just like, thank you for, for, for a small gesture like that. So, that's what I want only in South River to mean going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on first call? Second call?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Hutchison, 38, Virginia Street. Couple things first off, with the election that Richard just spoke about, I want to congratulate all the winners for their hard work and dedication for the borough and also want to congratulate those that didn't win for the campaign they ran. It is never easy to come forward and run for office, no matter what situation it is. And in many cases, it's a thankless job, but everybody up here understands that process. I congratulate all of you for the, again, what you do on a daily basis. And again, congratulations to both the winners and the losers this past Tuesday in the primary, even those that ran unopposed. Second off, I think it was two meetings ago, Mike, you had talked about a grant that you had applied for, I believe, maybe you were a council person or something like that, but you applied for a grant? Okay. I would like to make a recommendation to the Mayor and Council. We get a copy of that and we submit the same grant, if, if we haven't done that already. Change it to South River and submit it because obviously you made some magic happen. So, Magic Mike, take his, let's do it here and let's try to get some coin. Next off, I'm up to talk about Virginia and Darrow Street again. The residents out there were, were kind of surprised at the last time I was up here that nothing had been done. But I understand it's a very wide road and it comes with specific rules and regulations as far as when you can, put a stop sign in when you can't. But, before the meeting started, I was actually talking to Mr. Suarez and the lieutenant. And some of the things that, if we cannot get a four-way stop on Virginia and Darrow from where the accident took place back in October because it's too wide or we're not going to taper the intersection to make it with a four-way stop, which I understand is going to be quite expensive, if we're not going to make it a boulevard with some sort of a strip down the middle, again, the expense associated with that. If we can't do any of those things, I noticed that we now have a four-way stop on Darrow and Ferris and also on Colfax and Ferris. That's one block off of Virginia Street. Both of those intersections now have four-way stops and with the new stop signs on Darrow Street and also on Colfax, it says stop ahead on both sides. So, it's alerting the drivers that there's new stop signs there. What I would like to see is on Darrow Street before Virginia Street, on both sides of Virginia Street, we paint stop ahead on Darrow Street. That may help slow down people. Number two, we have its slow 25 mile per hour painted in the street, although it's very faded, down by Brining Place. It's the only spot on Virginia Street where that actually is on Virginia Street. Now, in pre, prior to the meeting when we were talking, what maybe we can do is paint a double-yellow line the length of Virginia. Something new. Drivers see that, they may react. And then, in each lane sporadically through the entire length of Virginia Street, slow 25 miles per hour. So, it's again, something new, something different where it again, is a visual for maybe the drivers will see that, they'll slow down, so it's not that there's a police car out there, it's not the signs, it's not the speed limit sign, it's something that's permanent. Again, I don't think that'll be extremely costly. It's something we may be able to do ourselves, but just a thought that maybe we can do something which will have a good splash and have something different where, again, drivers see it, they'll slow down. Again, we understand it's not just Virginia Street, there's a lot of speeding problems in the borough and, you know, our police department does a great job in, in trying to, to reduce that, but they can't be everywhere on every street 24 hours a day. Last Monday, I was out removing all the landscaping stone at the electric pole at the corner property where the accident took place because they're replacing that pole. And as I had my back to Darrow Street, the, the Daley's Pond, I don't know who it is in the borough, maybe you're not from the borough, it was a black Mazda CX-5, blew right through Darrow Street about 7 o'clock at night. If anybody coming down Virginia Street, we would have had the same identical situation again. And I had my body in front of the utility pole, so I would have been a catastrophe. Now, maybe some people would have liked that, I don't know, but...
We'd miss you.
Thank you, Mayor. He would have had the one rose at my, at my funeral, that would be good. But, again, just, just a thought, we may, can, maybe we can do something just with paint to at least change the look where, again, drivers see that, maybe they'll slow down. Because again, it's, it's not changing. You hear it all the time and you see it all the time. So, just a thought, guys, okay? I believe... Yep, that is it.
Okay, thank you. Lieutenant, if you can look into that.
Deputy Chief.
You know...
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, excuse me, Deputy Chief. Go, also talk to Mr. Saris there.
Yes, we have a conversation.
Mayor, if I may also, what if there was also a crosswalk crossing Virginia too? Like, I feel like people are more cautious when they know somebody might be crossing as well and those are big and white.
As Mr., you know...
Mister, I have an idea and I was trying to text it to you. You weren't picking up on that or I wasn't giving the signal well.
As Mr. Hutchison said, to change it up a little bit, make it more colorful, people will then think instead of just seeing black pavement and, and tear down the road. So, thank you, Mr. Hutchison, we'll take a look into it. So, anyone else on first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it. No mayoral appointments. So, then we come to our consent resolutions. Anything to be read separately? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 2023-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now, therefore, being and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2023-195 to 2023-217. 195, authorizing Providence Bank for Primary Banking Services. 193, awarding a contract to CME Associates for Professional Services. 197, authorizing CME to file an air quality permit with NJDEP. 198, appointment of Recreation Department positions. 199, granting renewal to ABC licenses from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th of 2024. 200, authorizing the purchase of a pickup truck for the Electric Department. 201, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Megan Ann Bennett. 202, authorize certain utility refunds. 203, authorizing the execution of a contract with Forerunner Industries Incorporated. 204, authorizing the execution of a supplemental software product agreement with Mitchell Humphrey and Company. 205, purchase, purchase of a roll-off truck for the Department of Public Works. 206, approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the NJDOT. 207, resolution appointing hearing officer. 208, accept May 22nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes. 209, authorize the bills and claims list. 210, appoint special law enforcement officers, Class 1. 211, awarding a contract to Kleinfelder for Professional Services. 212, authorizing AGRA to provide professional services for the change in chemical treatment in the borough's water system. 213, authorizing the offering for sale of borough property located at Block 212, Lot 6.02. Resolution 2023-214, resolution ratifying the settlement of litigation entitled Kajadik v. Borough South River. 215, resolution authorizing the identification of Chief of Police Mark Tenigan for punitive damages that may be sustained as a result of a civil suit in Superior Court of New Jersey. 216, resolution authorizing the identification of Deputy Chief of Police. And 217, resolution authorizing the indemnification of Public Safety Communicator Adam DeHaines.
Motion to... Pleasure on the resolutions. Moved by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Yes.
We just have one change. It is on 213. It's authorizing the offering for sale of borough property located at Block 212, it's Lot 6.03, not 6.02. Just...
I amend my motion and...
And seconded by the second, okay. With that change, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with Consent Resolution 209, abstention to 2301108, 2301216.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Consent resolutions have been approved. There's nothing to be read separately. Governing body comments, Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. Just to repeat what the, sorry, DPW reported earlier, sanitation pickup on Tuesday, July 4th will be post, I should say suspended. The actual pickup will be on the 3rd, which is that Monday, so put it out the 2nd, which is Sunday night. I know that I seen this on social media and people were asking questions in regards of the firehouse case, in regards of the Senate, sorry, the remediation. What you don't know is when the firehouse was built, there were several tanks that were found in the ground. By law, by DEP rules, you have to find, you have to state a, or sorry, start a case, which they did and they're following through. That case will actually expire next year. But, to answer your question about the funding, it's actually state funding. As of for Memorial Day, Cultural Arts and Heritage did a phenomenal job. The bike rodeo, Sergeant Chris Flores, as well as Lieutenant Bobby McCuskey, along with Danielle Stone, did a phenomenal job. It was a great turnout, good weather. South River Day will be this coming Saturday, which is going to be held on Montgomery Street from 12 to 5. At the same time, the Mason's Lodge is also having their Rib Fest. Keep hearing that the ribs are phenomenal. That is from 1 to 5. Father's Day is coming. Happy Father's Day. And last, happy 4th of July.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballas.
Remember this Wednesday is Flag Day, so put your flag out and fly it proudly. My grandfather was born on Flag Day. He'd be 125, I think now. But, he was a true American and it was a perfect day for him to be born. I attended the Portuguese flag raising ceremony over the weekend. It was very well attended. It was another beautiful day. Daley's Pond looked absolutely beautiful that day. It really, really did. Some work may be done, but, has to be done, but it really, really looked pretty. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers and our next meeting is not till July 10th, so happy 4th of July.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
As Councilwoman Ballas said, the South River Portuguese Club hosted their flag raising on Saturday. It was great to see the schools from the Portuguese School and then the folklore dancing group. Also, they had the kids perform, just really a great event. I know it's been mentioned, but South River Day is coming up on June 17th. Looking forward to seeing everyone there. On June 24th, South River Parks and Rec, we're trying to bring something back. We are looking, well, we're going to be attending a Yankee game. It's a 405 first pitch at Yankee Stadium against the Texas Rangers. If you're interested, please go to Civic Rec. We will be providing a bus transportation, a ticket, a hot dog and a drink. Everything's included for $95. We have so far, I believe, 10 to 15 tickets sold, which we're really excited about and we're looking forward to starting this tradition every year. One of the things I've learned about being on council is things are very slow. They don't move quick, but as Councilwoman Ballas mentioned, Daley's Pond is getting there. I know Fitzpatrick, we're working on the water issue as well. Our parks are being done, it's just, they may not look like it right now, but we're really excited. We're seeing a lot of new equipment. Art, is there a rendering of what Daley's is going to look like on the website?
It's on the website, I don't think we ever got a, we have our own picture, I don't know if that can be copied, you know, just take a camera shot of it and put it...
Okay. Well, I'll try to get a picture of the renderings of what Daley's will look like and we'll put it on the South River Facebook page for Parks and Rec, but it's really going to be an awesome park.
We expect them to be doing it very shortly. They're working at the school right now.
Okay. Thank you, Art. And they're redoing the field there. We're really trying to make that a focal part of town. It's the pond, you know, the walking path will get there eventually, but it's just really great to see all, everything being done. But as Councilwoman Ballas mentioned, it looked awesome over the weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kretchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Many thanks to our police, our fire, our, especially our DPW for all the work that they've done over these past few weeks and everything with, from the Memorial Day Parade to what they did at Daley's Pond and everything with, around the gazebo and all. It's, it's really great. With that, the only thing I really have to ask is the people to please subscribe to Nixle if you can. It gives you, just like our business administrator stated before too, it'll tell you the traffic alerts that are going on for the next three days between Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday with Jackson Street. Also, the, the valves and everything that our contractor is doing on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Any other incidents that happen and everything, they'll come through on Nixle and this way at least you can be a little bit prepared if there is a little bit of disturbance at water or with traffic or anything else too. With that, I'd just like to wish all the other fathers out there a happy Father's Day, a happy 4th of July and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Before I get on my comments, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question that I want to clarify with what we're authorizing AGRA to provide with the, with the water system. I'm sorry. So, the scope of the work that's going to be done is just to see where the wat, the issues of the wa, where we have the brown water issues in a certain part of town?
You're talking about the hydraulic model?
Yes.
Oh, the hydraulic model?
Correct.
Yeah, the hydraulic model was previously done, submitted to the DEP. The idea with hydraulic models is to identify areas in, in the borough where the, where water flows can impact dirty water and to try to correlate some of the, the flows coming from different parts of the system, whether the water's coming from East Brunswick or the treatment plant, to identify some of the causes of the dirty water.
Okay, so this project is really just to identify where it is?
Correct. The proposal, I, did you, I don't know if you, did you have...
Yes.
Yeah, that, that describes exactly what they're going to do.
Okay.
The proposal is identifying the areas, they're going to be particularly focused in on, on the areas where they saw most of the dirty water.
Okay, because I, my question was, is it going to be in all of the town or is it...
Yeah, the hydraulic model was originally done on the entire town.
Okay.
This particular one's going to be focused on the areas where they're the most problematic. And it, and it may extend to other areas if they identify certain conditions that, that may affect other parts of the town.
Okay. And then, so this proposal, because we approved it today, Mayor, when would this begin?
I would assume you got to execute a contract. It, I would assume, you have to execute a contract. The contract's directly with, it's not with, with AGRA, it's with Kleinfelder. It'll be directly with the Kleinfelder engineers.
Okay.
Probably soon as they get the contract to us, we'll sign it.
The contract, yeah, to execute and to process.
Okay. I was just trying to get an idea of our timeframe here. I know we've been talking about the dirty water, now we're looking into where it's coming from. After that, what is our next step on the council here as to going forward for the improvement of it?
Yeah, as soon as that, that contract's executed, they'll, they'll begin the project. And, and I'll be, I'll be working directly with Kleinfelder on the project to make sure it moves pretty quickly.
Okay. So do we think by our next meeting we'll have an idea, or are we waiting until...
No, not by the next meeting.
It would probably, do you have another meeting in August? Probably by August, you'll have some, some firm answers and a, and a report back.
Okay.
I'm pretty confident with Kleinfelder's ability to get this done. I've, I've had pretty good experiences with, with, working on different parts of the state, city of Newark, New Brunswick, so they're, they're pretty, they're, they're pretty capable of getting, moving quickly on this.
I just asked for the timeframe, because you know, that's the number-one question that everybody asks us, and if we don't know, you know, what our next step is and how it's going to go...
We'll make sure it gets done.
Okay.
We'll check, make sure you get the answers that you need.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you. I know you guys all spoke about the flag-raising on June 10th. My apologies for not being able to make it, I did, I was at work, but the Human Relations Commission always does a phenomenal job with their flag-raisings, and I'm sure you'll have more of those throughout the summer and into the fall. South River Day, the 17th. June 20th is also the planning board meeting for anybody who's interested in reviewing the master plan, correct? Here at 7:00 p.m. June 21st is the last day of school, so after that, you will be seeing a lot more children out there. June 24th, I believe that's the day of the baseball game, Jason?
Yeah.
And in the morning, if anybody is interested, there will be a cornhole tournament at the South River Portuguese Club. The SR Riders are hosting an event in order to help out some of our recreational programs in their way of donating to the borough. The South River Riders donate a lot within the community, I know they did for the Bike Rodeo as well. June 26th is also the week of Junior Police Academy. I know a lot of kids signed up, and they're ready to go for that. So a lot going on for this month. I want to wish everybody a good 4th of July, and hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have some more answers with what we're going to do with improving our water quality. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Memorial Day, as I always said, the parade is a piece of Americana. It was good to see so many people come out for it, it was a beautiful day, not like last year when it was just like 90 degrees and 90% humidity. Good time, always a chance, whenever the town is offering something, come to it, take advantage, get to know your neighbors. There are things that are happening, like the bicycle rodeo, that was fun. The fishing derby, I missed out on that because I was at Reverend Greg Bazila's retirement service and picnic there, can't be everywhere. But again, there are things that are happening. The Portuguese flag-raising was open to the public, you can go out there and, you know, come out and see what's happening. As you've heard, there was entertainment there, it was fun, it was a good time. You're not invited to Government Day, hopefully the weather will be good, but the third graders are going to come, they're going to come to the museum, the firehouse, the police station here. They get to ask questions, and you never know what's going to come out of their mouths. It's fun for the people that are going to be here, I'll be here, the judge, the assembly people send representatives, so it'll be good. South River Day, again, like Memorial Day, come on out, small town, see what's happening in the towns, fun for the kids, you know, always come out, do something, become part of your town, take advantage of your town. Some people are constantly out there, others sit like a lump. Don't be a lump. July 4th is coming up, Happy Birthday, America. Definitely thank you for that information, because I, garbage is picked up on Tuesday, so I don't have to remember to put it out on Sunday, they do come early. Our next meeting is July the 10th. And with that, we're also, we'll not see you for Father's Day, so happy Father's Day and happy July 4th. Is there anything else to come before us? If there is not, motion has been made to adjourn by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned.